Beautiful. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the special Bristol Town Council meeting of February 1st already, we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everyone. So this was a special workshop and kudos to Rep. Ujafuza. I hope I said that pretty senator, sorry. I said that right? Did I say that right? Okay, thank you. So it was your idea to call this and this is not a new idea, but it's been not something that Bristol has done in quite a while. So thank you. Thank you to all of our reps and senators for taking time out of your evening to spend time with us so we can discuss where we see and where we want to go. And we're also interested to know what you see and where you want to go. Some questions were posed to. Let's start off on the positive. What do you say? So so we have a room full of politicians. That being said, I know that everybody has important things to do, including this. So if we can, we'll stay tight and we'll go through. I'm going to start with. Tim had responded to the email we sent out and you all have a copy of this. And there's a lot that I think, if not all, that we share some questions on. And I know myself and my colleagues will have some additional questions. We're interested to hear. Obviously, you hear us and what we believe the focuses are, but we're very interested to hear where your focuses are, what challenges, what successes, such and so forth. So if I may, council and reps and senators, I think we'll just start at the first one. And it's truly probably the highest on the list for a reason, which is the school funding formula. I think we all got a printout that I had just got this evening. So I'm interested to hear a little bit more about this. Could you, I know for myself and probably all of us, I would love, not love, very much love to see the the bonus for the regional school system come back around again. I don't think it's an unreasonable request, and I also don't want to, I don't think we need crazy dollars. But though that bonus made a massive difference and it's appropriate. And it's not just for Bristol, obviously Bristol Warren. There are other regional schools that would also benefit from it. The state benefits from the savings of the regional school district. And obviously, the towns benefit from that additional funds, and that helps us do more than what we can now. So I would pose that question. Who who gave us the printout? You did. So I'm going to pose that to you, Senator. Just the switch on the bottom there.
Okay, before we dive in, I just wanted to give a just a 30 second overview of what we're talking about here for the folks at home. So there is the way the state distributes the money is through a school funding formula. And we are currently in the process of revamping that formula. But basically, what it does is try to distribute the money fairly throughout the state. And as you can imagine, inner city school districts in Providence have a lot more, get a lot more money and are considered higher need versus suburban communities, which has, which are able to rely more on their tax base. So that said, you can look at the chart and see that this year you guys are going to be, let's see, you are on this line that says Bristol Warren. You, it looks like according to this, the total change is going to be $896,000 more. I will just contrast it with my other town, which is Portsmouth, and we will be losing 275,000. Now, I have to caution you that this chart, I've been told, is one of a few because the numbers are in flux. And so I'm not exactly sure that these are the absolute right numbers, honestly. But suffice it to say that every one of our school districts is losing students. And that's an issue because, you know, that alone will bring the money down. And the challenge for communities like ours is that we have to justify why we need money. And I'm putting it very bluntly, but it's been difficult. And the only counterargument I have is if you look at a fairly wealthy community like Barrington, it is getting significantly more money than our communities. And honestly, I don't know why. I do know that they have an explanation, but frankly, this formula is a quadratic formula. So it has, you know, a square root symbol over variables and whatnot. And I've gone to a couple Senate hearings where they're discussing how this formula was created. And it's not, it's very opaque to me. Perhaps I'm not good at accounting or whatever, but.
No, it's okay. You're not missing anything. Yeah.
Right. So it's in the process of being formed. I know you have a request to get bonus money for being a regional school district. But it's just, it's, I'll let my more experienced colleagues answer this. I'm not sure how it's going to get formulated, like who is really in charge. I know what we will approve it as a legislature, but. There you go. Take it away.
Well, well, the first first thing is you made a mistake. I think you looked at the wrong line.
Am I looking at the wrong line?
Yeah.
Total change?
Yeah, it's the 300,000 differential, and that's with with categoricalizing and those types of entities. In, I just want to express that Rep. Speakman was supposed to attend, but unfortunately she's ill, so she's not here. Basically, the district is losing money. Again, a lot of the distribution has to do towards, I believe, towards free and reduced lunch. That's a major category within the distribution of aid. And I, and I stress this all the time when I talk to the school committee members, that each of these people have to be counted. Because if you don't count them, then they don't become a part of your success formula in terms of getting aid. And it really shows when a community like Barrington almost gets as much as Bristol Warren combined. And I think something's wrong with that type of the formula. As far as goals and aspirations in terms of trying to get a categorical aid for regional school districts. I've been trying that for the last 10 years or 12 years since the new formula came about. And it doesn't seem to grab with the Department of Education or with the existing governors. And a lot of the budget is well set when the governor appoints or approves something in this initial budget. So that around 90% of that stays in the budget. So it's imperative that we get in charge with the governor. And it's important that all those district committees start meeting as a bona fide group. They did maybe around three years ago, and I thought they were highly effective in trying to channel some energy in terms of getting more aid.
Senator, how, and reps, is, does the school, does our school reach out to you? Does administration reach out? Have you had these conversations? And I'm semi recently would be an appropriate way to word that.
Yeah, we had one maybe a week, two weeks ago or something like that.
Thank you.
Where they, yes.
And what was the outcome of that?
I thought it was very positive. They made some recommendations in terms of transportation, looking at regional bonus types things. And I was able to educate them on the whole process from like 12 years ago, when the new funding formula came out and it showed that we were getting $8 million more than what we should have been receiving. And so what the the House and the Senate recommendation was that those in communities that were, had more funds that were going to lose those funds would lose it over a 10 year period. And those that needed significant gains would garner it over a seven year period. So we went through that process to that.
Is this, can I just make?
Of course.
So every, am I on? I can't.
You are on, yes.
So every year, those of us that live in regional districts and represent regional districts, we put in legislation to increase aid, especially transportation aid. Those, those go in every year. But what you have to understand is we get pushback from the communities that are not regional. Because to give us more money, they have to get their, their attitude is they get less money. You know, the money has to come from somewhere. So a lot, you know, it just, they just die in committee a lot of times. Or when they go to the budget, we never get, we never get what we want. We did, when I first became a representative, I guess it was 17 or 18, we were meeting, the representatives from the regional districts were meeting and going over our priorities, and we pushed for them. But again, the formula is what it is and the, you know, the powers that we went, went by the formula.
What opportunities do we have? If if not for the regional bonus, then where is an opportunity?
If I could just, from what I've read and I'll have some if you like to correct me if I'm wrong. Couple of things that they're looking at to try to make it a little bit fairer is that we know that there needs to be increased compensation for students that live in poverty, and they've always used the free or reduced lunch as that metric. The governor is proposing using SNAP as that metric. They think they'll, they'll capture more people with that. That's hopefully, because not all students out of embarrassment or what, don't apply for free or reduced lunch. So it's not necessarily capturing everybody that deserves that bonus. The governor is also talking about trying to fully fund the special ed children and also the English learners. So hopefully, I don't know what your percentage is in Bristol Warren Regional as far as English language learners and special education, but if those students could become more fully funded, then I think that that's going to be helpful as well.
If it, if the metric changed to SNAP, what would we see as a change? Would it be a positive change?
Students, yeah, so the students are funded by an extra percentage when they are considered low income. And right now, they use to decide if a child is in a low income household, they use whether they get free or reduced lunch.
I guess I should have reworded and said that in our community.
I don't know what your numbers are.
Gotcha.
But like the governor's office says that that will capture more students, not less.
The issue always has been the parents not filling out the forms. And it's a privacy issue, especially now, parents, people in general don't want to fill out forms that get sent to the government. It's just a thing. And I mean, I've been out of the district for 12 years now, and it was an issue then, and it's an issue now. And that if we could up those numbers, and I, I don't know how to, you know, how to encourage people to fill that out. That that's, that's an issue that we're missing a lot of those children.
So the feeling is that there are more people that apply for SNAP than apply for free or reduced lunch. So hopefully, it will better reflect those students.
Thank you.
You know, I work in an urban district and we're used to having numbers like in the 70s, 80%. And I just did the October enrollment data, and it's like 50s and 60s. Because people, you know, because we've coming off of the COVID years where everything was free, universal free breakfast and lunch. And I'm not sure, I know I'm going to mess this up, so it used to be the concept of it. But because I don't fully understand it, I need to have somebody like sit down and explain it to me like one more time. But something about like direct certification, there's something about like people that wonder about if we would get free or reduced lunch. But I don't think they have to fill out the forms too. They don't fill out the forms because there's no consequence if you don't fill out the forms. So you're still going to get the free meal. But now the numbers, I mean, imagine like where I am, like I'm earning for money, and my numbers are now like 50% at a school that maybe was once 79%. And it's a huge issue, I know, I'm sure in every district, because I've heard, you know, our CFO and other people talking about this, our IT people, like what to do, and they're really trying to chase down the kids to get the families to fill out forms, you know, the high school kids and so forth. But even our high school numbers, like unlike other, other suburban districts, our high school numbers are always pretty high, you know. It's just not there at all. It's the highest was 60, 60%. And that's 60 schools.
So my other thing I'm not clear about, unfortunately, I wasn't able to make the breakfast with the school committee. But I know the enrollment is dropping. I don't know how much of that is just a decrease in population of students? How much of that is students that are moving to other schools doing to other districts, but also going to charter schools? And so I I don't know if you have those, but I think that that's worth looking at. Because I know a lot of communities are trying to offer programming that would keep those students in the schools, if in their own schools, if possible, to not, to serve them better in their own home district and not to lose that funding to.
What you just pointed out
CTE program.
Has been a conversation at joint finance committees over the last couple of years, changes in student population, trying to attract and keep those students. Speak to us about that for just a moment. It, I had personally experienced with someone that I know that went to another community's high school, ultimately because of football. And it made me cringe that that it would even be possible that such a thing could happen.
My knowledge of that.
And I'm, this is.
Expert, but to my knowledge, it's not possible to go because of football. It has to be that there's a CTE program. I mean, that might be why they chose.
My funny face was because it bothers me a lot. Yeah.
I'm saying that that's not what went on the form is why that student asked about, right? So there has to be that there was some sort of programming that their, their native school system didn't offer.
I bring that up only with just, it's, is that, should we be looking at, maybe this is something that, should we be looking at tightening that up to make it, I mean, if it was possible? And obviously, they may have expressed other things that motivated them to go to that other school. But it would seem like it should be.
I'm a healthcare provider and I'm an educational expert. My understanding and the other communities that I've talked to about this is that the goal is to offer the program to have those students want to stay in their home district, not to try to penalize them if they're going to.
Yeah, it just, it shouldn't be
Right, so there's.
Overly easy to.
Right, well, but there are also like CTE offerings and looking at that and trying to expand the educational opportunities in the own district.
There's other funds that the governor has appropriated in the fiscal budget for, to compensate those public schools that are losing enrollment to charter schools. So there's a bucket of money of maybe eight or nine million dollars that people are going to divide up based on population losses. And then there's also a compensation that the governor has proposed in his budget relative to enrollment decreases. So if a community has an enrollment decrease, then there's a bucket of money that will be distributed based on those losses. So the total educational output is probably about 55 million that the governor is putting in. And it's dispersed over these different buckets of money, whether you call them categorical aid or or regular just aid for communities.
Well, can I just follow up on my second part of the question? At the breakfast with the schools, I was there, a couple of us were there. They talked a while to you all about the transportation funds and moving us back into like just a different region. And I think I said to you, I had that bill in like probably 20 years ago. And, you know, so the irony is that you can't bring, you can't go to St. Philomena's, but you can go to La Salle. But I'm wondering what your, you know, given the, the number of big name private proprio schools that are in the region that we're in now, what do you think is the realist? Do you realistically think that you will be successful in getting that region changed? There's so many lobby, you know, there's a big strong lobby from the Catholic schools and the private schools as well. And because I think he takes in La Salle, it takes in Bayview, and I think St. Ray's. I don't think Hendrick did, no.
No, it doesn't take.
We put the bill in to change us to District 5. June, myself and Jason put that bill in last week. I don't know if it's on, you know, the Senate side.
We're going to mirror that on the Senate side and.
What communities did you place in that district?
We just wanted, I don't know what District 5 is offhand, but that was what they wanted.
Well, the district is the Newport County district. And so the, the question was to put the East Bay in there. And what do you determine to be the East Bay, just Bristol and Warren? Or do you determine it to be Bristol, Warren and Barrington? Or do you determine it to be East Providence, Barrington, Bristol and Warren? So I don't know what your bill says.
It was just Bristol Warren because that was the who with whom we were meeting, was it?
Yeah. Somebody identified it as District 5. I, I'll have to go back.
Well, you can look at the lists. Yeah, so I moved Bristol Warren to that district. The only question I had, and I know that question came to Barrington, if they would want the same thing, and they said no. And part of the reason was that there are students that need technical, go to technical school, go to East Providence.
Also to ours.
Right, so that, so that busing issue was.
I think you still have to provide that, but I mean, what do you think is, do you think that bill has a chance of passing? I think the superintendent said it was about a million dollars or something like that, that a.
It will be introduced and we'll see. I talked to the other school district I represent, and they said that they would have no problem with it. It wouldn't financially affect them. So.
How would it affect us?
It would affect us in terms of transporting our students. And that's why I asked about Barrington to Spout Detention, St. Luke's, to, to La Salle, to St. Ray's.
So. What is it on a dollar in a six?
About a million something dollars.
So a million is what we.
But now, but now you can remember, you'll have to, you pick up St. Phil's, you'd pick up Portsmouth Abbey.
So it could be a wash.
It's a net positive, obviously. Why do it if it's, it's not?
I.
That's what they have to show us.
That's what they, that's what they were, why the question came up. They said like over a million, I forgot the exact number, that they would save if they were taking people, students as far as they are. Because they do have, those are pretty long routes, like, you know, getting down Smith Street to La Salle is a pretty long route. But you, that's also a very big lobby is what I'm saying. And that's the question I'm really asking is like what the chances are that could actually happen? Because, you know, when you start putting those forces of La Salle and Bayview, let's say, and I'm not even going like, I'm sure the private schools in Providence are covered as well if they go to these others. You know, just, it's just interesting, and that's why I was asking them what they thought might happen with that.
So, so would the parents have to pay for them to be, but not the school? Like the La Salle wouldn't have to pay for the student to go?
The parents would either get a bus or like, so Hendrick and they'd have a bus, the parents pay for it. And then they pick up at like certain locations. I think that's how that would be.
So that's, that's where some of that opposition might come from.
Yeah.
But you could grandfather in, you know, the current students under that.
Going all over the state. Now you'd be going in Newport County, and you'd be going all the way up to, you know, Providence, Patonia.
I guess what I'm saying is that the ones that currently have the transportation, you could keep them having the transportation. And then any new student that's entering into those schools, they won't get to pay for it.
You could do it, and it's just like going to be a kind of like a organizational project.
I mean, just keep in mind that being a regional school district, we also get 50% reimbursement of our transportation because we're a regional school district.
So maybe there isn't as much savings. I don't know. It'd be interesting to see. I'm just curious about that because that number was thrown out.
Because I just all feel the same way. We don't care what it's called. Is if it helps us pay and offset those costs, then we're happy to, whether it's transportation, regional bonus or whatever. Doesn't matter.
Let me keep in mind you'll get taxpayers coming up to you too, because now all of a sudden they're going to flip the bill where it was part of the regional idea that they're not, they don't have students within the school system. So potentially, they're saving you money.
Right, and that would be the argument, of course.
So when we're talking about the 50%, that's out of district transportation altogether?
No, it's in district.
In district.
Your regional school.
Right, right. Okay.
Yeah. Senators, I really appreciate your time tonight. I want to ask you about any more bonds coming out for the, like fix our schools bond to actually kind of breathe some, some new life into these buildings. For me, I, I feel like our Bristol Warren Regional Schools need a facelift desperately. And do you know of anything, any more money coming down as far as bonds?
There's tons of money. I mean, it's 300 million. There was 250 million. It's, the school committee would have to call a ride and get through. There's a, there's a process that you go through in terms of the various stages of theoretically what you want to do in terms of additional buildings and going through the concept phase to the next phase to the next phase.
So I spoke to Nikki Piper, and I know that they're, they're prepared to meet the first deadline of February 15th, first stage one for the high school.
Stage one.
That's the, the current deadline right now to get all of the potential bonuses. Because it's all like you start at 35%, but then you layer on that with what things that you do, what bonuses are available. And so the pots of money that were approved by the voters, the first to the 250, and then it was just another bond that was approved. 300. So they have dates, though, but it was very intentional that they wanted, if you're going to get this money, that you had to like move and do it. And so the first deadline for stage one submission is February 15th. And then I believe stage two is September 15th, but don't quote me on that.
Right, right. And it sounded like they're going to do that. They're going to make it.
That's what.
Not holding you to it, but.
The expectation was that they would meet the stage one submission.
I think they referenced that at that breakfast meeting as well, and that they're prepared to go forward with, you know, whatever they can in the high school is their target school to redo.
Oh, thank God. That's great. Great news.
It might make sense in future meetings to have the school committee answer the school specific questions because I feel like we're one step removed from that, and that is what we do in Portsmouth, but we don't have a regional district, so.
We're in a
A different situation.
Different situation.
But certainly Anna Riley, your superintendent, would be able to answer these questions. She's very, very up on all of these deadlines.
Agreed.
I think I just sent a link to a, a document called Compete RI. If I haven't, I think I sent it to Steve and a few others. If I had your email, I went to a webinar from Senator Whitehouse's office that goes over all the funds available to municipalities for improvements from, like you're saying, composting to buildings. And, you know, it's just, it's so comprehensive. It's like A to Z. And there is so much money out there. You just have to apply for it. It has in this, it's in my computer now, but in this document, it gives you what the money can be used for and the application date and the application. So I'm sure that that document has made it to, you know, to, to the offices here. But he went, you know, his staff, the White House, White House's staff went over it. It's the infrastructure bill. It's the, the big one. And they, they put together this specifically for Rhode Island. So you could access that if you were looking for it, and I'll send you, I'll send you all the link.
I'd love to see that.
Could you send it to Melissa, which you can make sure we all get?
I'll send it to all of you. In fact, I just, the webinar was Monday or Tuesday, and I, and she just emailed me all the slides to it and the document and the recording today. So I will give that to you.
If you ever want to read something about the, the Senate did a study on the school funding formula maybe about three years ago. And it's on the, the state website. And you can link it and read it if you like. It's only about 190 pages. It's all different recommendations that the Senate's trying to propose on a piecemeal basis right now to get implemented within the formula.
Counsel. So agree that that whatever next steps would certainly require the school because of course, they are most, they know what they need the most. We meet with them at least yearly, and hopefully more than that coming up. We certainly have, yeah. Joint Finance Committee is, it, well, school's over 50% of our budget, right? And it's so very important. And it continues to get more expensive, and we're not alone with that. It's all the communities that have. So anything else that we want to discuss on this before we move to our next?
Another thing, excuse me, if I may
Of course.
interrupt was you asked what the school committee asked about
Yes.
or discussed, and one of the things was the enabling legislation. They would, they would like to see a review of the enabling legislation every, they didn't say what a year, maybe 10 years or whatever. But they were going to work on some legislation, and I told them that I would think it'd be imperative that the Bristol Town Council, the Warren Town Council, agree to whatever legislation you want to put forth.
Actually, I, I'm sorry, I did, I only found this out today, but our legal office said that there was no need for legislation that on a procedural matter like that where you wanted a review, that you could just, you know, decide when you wanted the reviews without a legislative change. So, sorry. So, sorry. And this, we're all working out the, this as well. I have to tell you that when I called DEM, they said, this is funny. You're asking those questions because Representative Donovan just asked those same questions. It's like, oh shoot. So I, you know, we're, we're making our way through this process as well. And, uh, I hope you appreciate our, our just, our initial efforts will improve and become more efficient as we move along.
Yeah. Well, I, I think the, um, one of the things that they were talking about, the bylaw review would be having something in the legislation that would mandate a review every so often, not necessarily allow for any kind of review to happen. Because, um, the understanding that they have or the Bristol Warren Regional School District is that the other regional school districts have some sort of requirement that they need to review them, kind of like our charter review commission, where maybe every 10 years then we appoint the committee to take a look at things and, you know, take a fresh look and then make some recommendations to the council for us to adopt or, or whatever. So I think that that's where they're coming from. But yeah, I agree. You know, it seems like things have to be worked out a lot on something like that in terms of, was, what is that going to look like? You know, if you're going to do a review, is that going to be like a charter commission like we do it? Or what kind of things are they going to be reviewing? Is it just the entire enabling legislation? Are there certain aspects of the enabling legislation that should be looked at?
Staff has told us that in general, it, the, it helps, it's almost, well, it's required for bonds, but it definitely helps if the town council passes a resolution as to exactly what you would like the legislation to look like. And that way it doesn't look like we're just putting in legislation for one of you, whatever. So to the extent you can work it out and put it, what you want in a resolution, that really helps us to, um, draft the legislation.
I think we, I think we could do that, but I think to your point though, uh, it's an interesting question. It made me think. I try to review the things that we decide on, go to the public to be voted on. Am I correct? So maybe, um, in the public ultimately voted to regionalize. So I'm wondering if that, if those changes would have to go to the public or not. Like, I don't know. I don't know the answer. I, you know, if you wanted them to, it could be in the legislation, I guess. I don't, I don't really know, but that's, like I use that analogy.
Ultimately, it's on what needs to be changed, right? I mean.
I mean, we've talked about it. We've had many meetings about, you know, things that needed to be changed. I don't know if they ever got changed or not. I don't think they did.
There was a Blue Ribbon Committee, right? That had looked at it going back quite a while and had proposed some changes. The willingness wasn't there, uh, at the time. I think it's there now. Um, I, Tim and I were speaking recently about the enabling legis, uh, legislation. And there are things as simple and so important as there's no dollars for advertising. There's no dollars built into it for paying for someone to take minutes. Uh, there's no dollars, um, for, uh, legal at all. Nothing. Zero. So it is in each community. Well, you've got Bristol with, that needs representation. Warren, representation. The regional schools that needs representation coming probably from different places or semi-different places. So, and those are just two examples of a lot of things that are, are, I think best intentions written at the time, but they definitely need to be updated. So, and I believe that there's a willingness, um, from, I, I dare speak for Warren too, and so willingness for both communities to, to review this and, and update it. Where it wasn't in the past. Yeah. So, okay.
I, I think one of the, the benefits of adding in that part of the enabling legislation where you say, hey, let's look at this thing every five years is that you're not waiting for things to get to such a fever pitch that that's when you're making decisions on the basis of like emotion and things like that. It might be better to take a rational look at that every once in a while. Agree. So, agree. And it doesn't stop you from taking a look at it when you really need to. So.
Steve?
Yeah, thanks.
Mr. Administrator.
Yeah. In relation to the, uh, the email that Rep Donovan provided today, we did look at that. Um, and ironically, we had a meeting with Infrastructure Bank today with the Director of Community Development, our, uh, zoning officer. And it related to, um, the municipal resiliency projects, which was from that fund that Senator Whitehouse, uh, was promoting. But much of that you will see in the announcement. It doesn't really relate to Bristol. A lot of it has to do with like busing in the airport, um, a lot of energy things that we just wouldn't apply to us. Um, but there is a section on resiliency that we, uh, uh, there was the planning assistance, which we talked about in great deal. And it was a resiliency section that we talked about, um, uh, and we'd like to apply through the Infrastructure Bank. They're the pass through for the funding. Um, and it was for the, uh, low, uh, ferry road pump station and the shoreline, um, sewer main, which is getting inundated with seawater. So we are aware of that. Thank you. But many, many of the bills are, there were some school funding also, uh, which is what you just heard about. School district, uh, through the HUD funds, uh, recapturing the construction cost. So that, that was in there. But we did give, uh, that a thorough, thorough, uh, review. It's the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. That's what it was. So we are applying for everything that we possibly can that fits Bristol.
Thank you. Eric, we're getting a little bit of feedback here and there. You think that's the, I don't, down is off, but it doesn't tend to be, it doesn't usually do this.
Sometimes when there's few people in the room, it doesn't absorb the.
That's right. Okay. All right. Okay. So, um, the administrator kind of touched on the question two here or, uh, which was the state grants for open space, environmental impacts, for example, sea level rise, storm, water runoff, which of course would be resiliency. Um, so he hit that one. Tim, this was, these were your questions and I say your questions, they, I think they represent the council's questions in general. So.
Exactly. I think I've been hearing, I list all of you, and I think these questions embody all, everything that each one of you have come up with. So, which, yeah.
Was there more that you were hoping to discuss on this? And we would ask our reps and senators, is there more that the administrator just talked about one possibility? Is there other opportunities that we should be taking advantage of that maybe we're not? Or, or we could take greater advantage of?
Well, from Senator Whitehouse's office, I think it's, once they provide the information, I think it's up to the towns to go after the money.
Sure.
You know, um, that's what I got from, um, from that meeting. Um, did you want me to go to the next question? Tim, was the next one, the lights on asylum road yours too? Yeah, that is, that's been an issue before this. That's been quite a while, hasn't it?
Yeah, it's been.
Yeah. So.
Before we do, I just wanted to, to close that on it. And the administrator said it, uh, that we're going after all of those. Bristol has done an outstanding job of looking and taking advantage of and getting those grants, whether they are infrastructure or otherwise. So I say to all of you, please, if you see something out there, don't assume that we know. I would rather get two emails of the same thing than nothing at all. So if you're seeing things out there that, that we could take advantage of, or you're not sure if we can, send it our way. Absolutely. We've got great success on that.
Actually, I do send it, I forward it to Liz, to, um, Liz, to Ed Tanner and to Diane Williamson. Anytime I see a grant opportunity, I usually, I, I send it. And she usually gets them too. But if there's something that, you know, she might've missed, I always send it out.
My recommendation relative to anything with open space or environmental impacts would be for administration to contact, the Department of Environmental Management. Because they have a lot of category type of funds that they distribute based on, uh, some criteria where maybe 25% are town employed, 75 that state members.
And we take advantage of those. There's one right now that we're in the middle of actually. So.
That's what I'm saying. So, you know, that, that constant dialogue with EDM is inverted. Municipalities to know that those funds are available and can be applied for.
So I guess my point is we're happy to do the hard work. If you, you know, point us in that direction, we've got a lot of success with it.
It's, see, can't say the word, but that they have, uh, funds available.
MRP. Anything more on question two?
Uh, just Tony and I are, uh, were the liaisons for the seniors, I think. You know, certainly Steve, when he was looking at the municipal resiliency project grants and things like that, there might've been some stuff on disaster preparedness for seniors and things like that. And so, um, if anything like that comes on your radar, it's something that certainly, I think that's, uh, on our minds a lot as we're, uh, dealing with some of the impacts of climate change is ensuring that our seniors are prepared in case we have any disasters or anything like that. So, so any kind of, uh, grants that can go toward preparing seniors for those types of things would be awesome.
I'm not sure that if this is pertinent to this question or not, but I, I just submitted legislation yesterday. That requires the Economic Development Council to include the CRMC and the DEM, um, on any, on their planning council as well as to consider environmental impacts and how any economic development goes towards the act on climate. So I, I think that that's hopefully going to help bring the climate resilience, climate, um, actions more front, um, of initial budgeting for economic development and not just on the back end where we're trying to look at the impacts.
Right. That's awesome.
And I'll add that the State Director of Emergency Management happens to be a Bristol resident. And please don't ask me his name because I'm now blocking it out, but we.
Tom.
Yes. And so he is going to keep me posted about, uh, grant opportunities for the kinds of things you just talked about. So.
I stand here. So Sue, you were speaking to question three about the lights on asylum.
Yeah. Cause I, I remember this from another conversation that we've, we've had before. So DOT says it's not their issue. So I had, uh, I emailed, um, the D, I guess it's under DEM's, um, purview. And he didn't, I sent it as soon as I got your list and I have not heard back from him yet. But I will keep on emailing him every day or calling until I get an answer. Because I noticed I've gone down there in the dark and it is really dark.
It's really dark.
It's, yeah. It's ridiculous. Cause you know, like a lot of us use the recreation center.
Yeah.
And it's very, in like now, tonight, there's a big, uh, busload of people going out there to go somewhere to P-PAC, I think. And it's going to be pitch black when they come back.
Yeah.
And driving out of there. So, um, I will keep on DEM and, and find out who exactly is responsible for that. Because I know this has been an issue for a while.
Yes, long time. Yeah. And I think there were lights originally and then they were taken down and never replaced or something.
Yeah. I'm sorry. It completely got past me because I thought it was, I thought once we asked that it would get done.
So when do I follow up with you on this?
This, uh.
Do you want me to?
Beginning of next week.
Next week.
I'm going to keep on calling his office until he gets back.
Okay, great. I appreciate it. Thank you.
So Tim, to that point, um, Linda, this was your suggestion too, is that you said that in Portsmouth, you would ask the reps and senators for a follow-up meeting to see how this was going. It would seem, I, I love it. I think it's very, very appropriate. So, um, maybe, will you tell us? I mean, legislative session, we should probably meet before, it would seem appropriate, right? But when does that end? Remind me, please, for this calendar? The end of June. So that would be, that's about six months. So maybe before it ends for an update at the end of one of our conversations here. And it'll help us to see how things are going. Um, success. So.
I'll give credit where credit is due. It was the Barrington, uh, Town Council that called.
Kudos to Barrington Town Council.
Um, in Portsmouth, we have more informal, um, method. And it would just be that individual bills would be discussed with whoever wanted to press them forward.
Okay.
So you have dealer's choice. You can do either one or both.
Great. So we'll, uh, Madam Clerk, maybe, uh, we can discuss that and reach out to the reps and senators and find out, obviously, uh, to work for everyone's schedule, obviously with the council too. Um, before we go to four, at our last council meeting, the council, um, put together a resolution to support adding an additional auxiliary member to our, um, Historic District Commission, which either made it to you or will be making it to you shortly. Excellent. Okay. Perfect. So, and the goal behind that was to make sure that, um, business would continue unabated if, well, quorum can sometimes be a challenge. So, um, that was to help us do that. And it's, it's in your purview to add that. So. Excellent. Excellent.
Be assigned to it. Obviously we're in the process.
Excellent. Okay. So four was trash and recycling and, uh, specifically said any composting funding.
I'll just read what we've got from staff. It just says that resource recovery, um, well, there will be, um, project-based grant applications are accepted twice per fiscal year. Um, and training grant applications are accepted on a rolling basis. And so, um, if you contact RIRRC, um, you can find out more details.
Senator, do you mind, um, just emailing that piece over for? Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Look at us flying along here. So opioid settlement, other towns are other towns working together to network programs throughout the state.
I did contact the AG's office and again, I, it takes them about a week and a week and a half to get back to me when a question like that, but they are looking into it. So.
Basically, the, the state is settled for probably about a hundred and 45 million dollars over maybe five different entities. Uh, some of those entities are over distribution over an 18-year period and some are over a 12-year period. So it, it, you know, you can do the math and it's probably like about five million a year moving out. But, uh, a little bit more than that. But, because one of the settlements was for 90 million. So it was five million a year. The other ones accumulated up to about 54 million, 55. And, uh, the way the funds would be dispersed will be 80% will be for the state and 20% for the 39, uh, communities to distribute. So if you're talking about looking at some of, from a regional basis, that, that could be a nice perspective to, uh, meet with your neighboring towns to do something.
Yeah.
Mr. Minister.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. Ju- just to add to the conversation, uh, we have been working with the regional school district on a curriculum. Uh, but the funds can only be used for opioid prevention and treatment, um, which is.
What does that look like?
Um, opioids, uh, not marijuana, not vaping, not tobacco, not alcohol. So we're trying to find the proper curriculum, um, that will be a larger type of a, of a program that kind of can include some of those, uh, but without excluding us from the funding. So it's been, we're working on it. In fact, they did have, I met with our, uh, subsuse coordinator today. We are using some of our funding. We have over $80,000 right now in our, in that restricted account. We use, uh, so we pay, we use some of it for incidentals, uh, training. Uh, they just had an event last Friday at Monop High School. Some of the equipment that was purchased for that, that was related to opioids was used. So the funding is nice to have, but we're absolutely right. It would be nice. And our intent is to share it, uh, cooperate with Warren in the regional dis, school district. We think that's where the, we could get the most bang for the buck. So we are partnering with Warren through the school district.
Excellent.
Great. Great.
Excellent. Here's an old but a goodie. When will Ride Dot complete the sidewalks on Metacom and Hope?
2025. We'll be starting the sidewalks in Bristol. Uh, it's probably dispersed into maybe nine different categories. Uh, what I did was, uh, this morning I, uh, emailed Melissa to the, uh, DOT to Ride Dot website. It's a really comprehensive website. And it's, and it's pretty cool because you can put in your community and then it will show you what projects you have within your community. It has a map that outlines where those particular, uh, phases are going to take place. And when the, uh, start date is and when the completion date is. So it's over like a, uh, 10-year formula, 10-year period.
So Wally, this is bumps. I know you know. So Wally, this is bumps, I know you know this, but this has been an ongoing, it's been bumped and bumped and bumped on the tip program so many times. The likelihood of twenty twenty five is.
Well, I think, I think Bristol, if we recall, Bristol met with. DOT, maybe December of twenty one was the last time they met with them.
The administrator's been speaking with the office. I don't want to speak for you. So I'm not, I don't want to put you on the spot, but.
Yeah, I think I can help and clarify some things. Um, I did, we did spend time with DOT this week. We walked the. Tip twelve ninety nine, which is Constitution Street to Ferry Road, along Ferry Road to the university. So we walked the entire length. We started Brunside Street, we did the whole loop. And it's, I can honestly say it's the first time we're actually getting verbal commitments. And the Senate is absolutely right. There is, there's a very good tip program, transportation improvement program. But quite frankly, it doesn't mean the money is in there. So for example, you're going to see that there is twenty twenty two. There was work in twelve ninety nine, never happened because it wasn't funded. So. I will say we, the town of Bristol applied for a million dollar grant. It was a. Direct, I forget what they call it, direct, direct expenditure to near mock through Senator Reed. So that is what pushed this forward. We do have Director Alvedi's attention. I've been communicating him formally. I've spoken to Governor McKee and I am confident the Senator is correct. Twenty twenty five is construction verbally as right for right now. He must have had maybe ten people between, I think it's the HPHB. PHB, the engineering firm in DOT and there was actually somebody there from State ADA. So we walked the entire route. We're focusing on the south end of town. The engineering would be, would take place twenty twenty four and construction twenty twenty five. But it is very, very expensive because it's in, part of it's in the historic area. So there's granite curbing. And there's also a seawall there. That needs to be fixed with asphalt sidewalk is it's it's undermining.
The lobster pot area.
Yeah, not to get into all these details, but I just wanted to let you know that it's it's very, very expensive. And so what I like about. The current administration at DOT, I don't think they're going to wait to fix the seawall. I think they're going to do a quick repair. And from what I understand, they're going to go back and they'll try to attach it to another project just to get the project moving. They know it's been twenty years. Our documentation has gone back to nineteen ninety nine with our Hope Street sidewalks. County Bristol has been footing the bill for the repairs, which is statutory, correct? We maintain the DOT builds. So it's our responsibility to maintain, but they're beyond maintenance that they're very old. So as the Senate said, twenty twenty five, we're looking at the south end of town.
Yeah, in in a separate entity, our separate project would be that seawall. If you look at that website that I I just gave Melissa and Melissa can share it with you guys and you can go home and play with it to see that. There's all these different projects that are on the docket. Now, the question, as the administrator said, it will the funding be there and. And again, at any time, I think it's imperative that the administration meet with the the DOT to. Look at things that it might have changed in terms of priorities. You know, because just because something's in place for ten years, doesn't mean that that's the priority of the council. You know, and so I was kind of stressed the DOT when I spoke to them. That at one time it used to be the legislators, but now it's more community based. Because of the fact that the community knows more of what's going on than the legislators are in terms of roads, you know, you have a highway guide. Looks at your roads all the time and knows what projects should be accomplished where. That would be the more focal point of any discussion. And so they.
Yeah, and I, and I want, I want this to be productive and I think it is. Quite frankly, the project didn't get moving until we got Senator Reed and our senators and reps really started to push the project. The funding and the money is what pushes these projects. I've been arguing for years, I've been sending letters. But I don't control the DOT's budget. I think the decision makers with their budget for what gets projects moved. So. Again, I think with the help of Senator Reed and our reps and senators, we were finally able to get Bristol. One of the Bristol tip projects moving. And I'm not going to say they've been ignoring us. They did safety enhancements up on Medicum Avenue. There are a couple of bridges that they repaired, but I think it's important that collectively we all represent the Bristol. And the East Bay residents, we have to work together to make sure that DOT. At, you know, we have their attention and and administration, yeah, we can point you in the right directions, but. We can't get them to act. We we don't control their budget and quite frankly, that's the only thing that I see moving things is the funding.
Yeah, I mean, the big issue obviously is the the one that the administrator is talking about is the one from Dias Street and Warren. All the way to Cetera School doing the sidewalks. And and that's been when Mary was up there at the State House and stuff. And 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 part of the problem there is the fact that everything has to be ADA compliant. Which means that all those trees would have to go. And you'd have to basically start all over again because it's all hilly and bumpy and. And that's why I give a lot of credit to the administrator and the town council here in Bristol for putting those repairs in. Because it kind of sidetracks the ADA aspect of it, but it still provides a more functioning sidewalk. Then the roots uplifting and causing hair that that it doesn't warrant part of the line.
And there were a lot of places that were really bad off Chestnut Street with with a lot of seniors that use that. Talking about Hope Street, of course, but. But there is also, and well said about the, the north portion. Say North Farm and and Sullivan and all that, it's, it's, it's been forever. If it snowed, if it rained, you didn't want to walk down there and that's not the way it should be. So I'm, I'm really heartened to hear that this is going.
Yeah, I just asked that we continue to keep the pressure on. We're, we're, I'm very confident we're going to get this done on in twenty twenty five. But I hate to see something change. So I just asked that we keep, keep the pressure on.
Don't let off the gas.
So administrator, there's no engineering done at this point. They.
Nothing. No engineering's been done. So when you look at this, when you look at the tip, it looks like they did engineer, they didn't do any. They were just out to look at it earlier this week.
Right, okay.
Okay.
No, that's a very important, important piece because I'm going through there in Little Compton right now. What they've done thirty, they're going to be done sixty by March, well, next month, and they actually been on target. So you know, it's, I'm glad to see that they are moving some projects along. So good. But you're right, we need their support.
We appropriate a lot more money too this year. I think we appropriated like eighty five million for. Certain projects and then seventy million is in the budget to compensate for the loss of the toll money. And then there's maybe another ten to fifteen million that's in there that hopefully we approved and dispersed to. Individual towns for town projects. So there's been a real equalized distribution of a lot of the funds based on the fact that we have the surplus funds and and moving forward.
Well, in addition to that, the ARPA funds, they must be used or dedicated by the end, by next year, twenty twenty four. And used by twenty twenty six. So, you know, the time has come, we're talking about the FY twenty four budget.
Well, I I hate to monopolize the discussion from the Senate or the rep perspective of being on the finance committee approving to a lot more information and. The one point one three billion dollars has already, well, it's, it's, it's been structured to funding. Over the next three years and and the last fiscal. Meeting we had about half of it has already been spent. And so we're moving forward with the, the, the second half in terms of that distribution and where it's going. I mean, it's like. Two hundred and seventy million to public health, two hundred and fifty to housing, a couple of hundred thousand to. Small businesses in in those different aspects.
And when navigating the DOT, what's the best way to keep the pressure on in regards to making sure that priority shift doesn't change? Meaning that this project doesn't get pushed to twenty twenty eight or twenty twenty nine.
I'd recommend establish a meeting.
Okay.
Next couple of months just to go over, you know, your whole list. And if if that's still your priority based on you looking at what you have.
We'll set up a meeting.
We, we could attend to, I mean.
Okay, we'll set up a meeting. Thank you.
Anything else on this topic? No? Okay.
Getting back to that, I think we did that when we were doing the, the lights on on Medicum Avenue. We, we had a meeting with them.
So number eight was requesting a bill. To exclude municipalities from being assessed ten percent of public improvement project cost for state building fees where state building commission has jurisdiction. I skipped number seven.
You did. You want to go back to.
Yes, yeah, we'll just tee that one up. So do we have any timing around completing the bike path bridges, East Bay?
I have.
Bridges and Ferry Road.
Again, I'll read what I was sent from staff, the Senate. Let's see. The project management office states that until all the permits are approved, some of the permits necessary are CRMC, DEM, Army Corps of Engineers. They cannot determine the start of the demo. The permitting process is underway, but it is a lengthy process.
Hey, sounds big.
In my discussions with DOT, the completion date is October of twenty twenty five. And and that, as the Senator pointed out, they get to go through all these different aspects in terms of. Taking out the existing bridges and then obviously putting in new bridges. But the contract has been awarded.
Oh, okay. Well, there you go. And they did write, we will keep you advised as we make progress and can provide you with demolition scheduling information. So news to follow. Okay.
So that's. Hopefully it doesn't take ten years.
We will be.
Anything else on that? Okay, so I won't read it again, but question eight.
Right. So we did ask about not only changing the law, but a refund and we were told that they were certainly within their rights to. Charge you that fee. And I think we're going to work with your town administrator to try to put together. Something, but it would help that once again, if you put together a resolution asking us to do what needs to be done.
Council meeting.
Yeah, because I I think there was a litany of facts that, or a list of facts that supported why you thought this was an unfair fee. And you might want to put that in.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, just, I don't know if the council's aware of this. Our marina expansion, it's in state tidal waters. So the state. Building Commission got involved rather than a local inspection for electrical and building, it fell under the state building commission. So they automatically charge a ten percent building fee. And then on top of that are the electrical fees and the mechanical and everything else. So. Ten percent of a four million dollar project was forty something thousand dollars and I could tell you, I'm not, we run a small. Inspection division here, but it would not have cost us that amount of money to inspect what we built. We had, we had design engineers, we had electrical engineers. Quite frankly, we didn't need the state to inspect our marina. So the way I look at it makes no sense. It's a, an assessment or a tax on the local taxpayers. And I understand that you could say, well, it's, it's revenues. They didn't depend on it. They didn't budget for the revenues. They did not know we were building this. It was a bonus that they got. That's the way I look at it. And quite frankly, I sent a formal communications to the building commissioner and they said, no exceptions. We pay. So I just feel that the taxpayers already burdened enough. This is going to cost every, each and every resident of Bristol. And I just think it's, I just think it's an assessment. It's a tax by the state to the municipality.
What was the amount again, please?
Forty three thousand, four hundred ninety six dollars. And again, we could have done the work ourselves and and the the danger here is you could say, okay, Bristol. Pay up, but there are other communities that manage state properties. I think Haynes Park and Barrington. It's possible that you may want to build something there. I would say that you would need a state building inspection. There are other tidal communities that have structures on the water that would be in the same boat as Bristol. It's not unique to Bristol. Again, we don't mind paying for the services provided. But we just think it's an, it's unreasonable for a municipality from one form of government to charging of local government. It's, it's.
And it didn't sound like.
Quite frankly, it does not make sense and. And I'm going to fight it as much as we can. I'm going to ask for the resolution and we'll let the taxpayers decide who's right on this one.
Said on coming up soon.
Nice. Yes.
Thank you.
So we went through the questions that were printed. I'd like to open up. Is there anything that.
I do.
Was not on here that, okay. You raise your hand first, guys.
Oh, okay.
You raise your.
Okay. With that being said, there is something that really bugs me quite a bit. And it has to do with landscapers and please understand that, let me preface that, I think they do a wonderful job. They, they deserve to earn a living. The problem I see is with the blowers blowing the stuff right off to the roads. I see that stuff, they don't hesitate for a minute, you know, just to blow that stuff right off. I'm not saying that we should prohibit blowers. There, there's a, a purpose in the need for them. However, I think they need to start thinking about vac, using leave backs in to collect the stuff that they caught in tram and. Well, more the leaves in the grass trammings, they can use a vac. I've seen that. I currently purchase one in Little Compton for us to use there and it's been a wonderful tool. So with that being said, I have experience on both hands. They certainly can use the blowers to collect the leaves to a section, but not to blow them to the middle of the road where. You're driving, the stuff is just blown right into your window as you're driving by. And that has happened over and over. Now, here's the bigger piece is specifically here in many communities have storm, some more to catch basins. Guess where the stuff ends? Right there. You walk down to right here in Bristol, if you go to. Right by the, by, well, actually, yes, but if you go specifically by the Maritime Center. And when the big storm and you see that big pipe feeding the water onto the the harbor. Just watch all the leaves that come, come through that pipe unto the harbor. And you can see the difference that has made, how much stuff has collected right there by the Maritime Center. At some point, that's going to be, need to be drugged because. You know, just very little. But anyway, the bottom line is that I think we, you know, can be very fair to the landscapers. But I think we can ask them to be a little more prudent on the way they they do their job. So I would ask that we consider something at some level, you know, in some point in time to. Ask, you, you blow that to the street, you're going to get fined, I don't know. So we need to do something. You know, to, to curve this because it really has an impact on the environment and the harbor. And certainly, you know, when the stuff is collecting, it's re-blowing into your vehicle when you're driving by, some of them don't even think twice. And I'm not kidding you, you know, I've taken leaves out of my car, you know, for, because the landscape was just blown right off. No consideration, you know, for the drivers.
Could that be, is I, down or down or up? Is that, could that be a local ordinance? I, I know exactly what you're talking about. There are people, and it's not just the landscapers, it's homeowners do it.
Yes, yes, you are very correct.
And on Bay View, it all ends up at the bottom where we have a flood. You can't even pass through High Street at the bottom of Bay View. And I see people on that street. Put all their grass clippings in this, they blow it right into the street instead of bagging it or mulching it into their yard. So, but I, I would think that that would be a local ordinance that you could pass, that would be illegal. To sweep your debris into the, your front street, the street that fronts your house. We, I don't think we could do that statewide. I mean.
Yeah, the only thing I've seen statewide about things like blowers is how powerful they're allowed to be because of the environmental impact with the gas.
And the noise.
And the noise and that, right. So I, I've seen legislation around that, but I, I don't know that. Where the leaves now or the debris goes. I think that would probably have to be local.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I just, one of the issues just popped into my head when we're talking about transportation.
Yeah, I just, um, one of the issues um just popped into my head when we're talking about transportation. Um, I brought this up to people in transportation, like on the Transportation Advisory Committee in the past. I brought it up at Roger Williams at one point. Um, it's just probably not a good time to address it right now, but something to tuck in the back of your mind. Um, not a great time right now because we have such a hard time with bus drivers and so forth and so on. But it seems to me that one of the biggest issues in like with Ripta is like cross town. You know, not just in Bristol, but I'm just talking in general. So getting, um, you know, you have the routes, but how do you get to those other places? And those of us who have colleges and universities in our community already have, um, you know, buses that are up and down our streets. But there's liability issues, so the the colleges don't really want to do that. And I I don't understand why it can't be explored. Um, as far as like, you know, rip the contracting with them to take people. I mean, when I talk about little kids that we can't mix, you know, adults with um with students. We're talking about adult students. And, you know, it seemed like it would solve like a lot of issues if somebody's, I mean, like in Bristol, they're back and forth to CVS, back and forth to Wellgrates, what back and forth to supermarkets. Um, and they stop spotted every corner on High Street and on the streets. And I think that that is some, like, that would be like more of a creative way to solve that problem rather than putting like new bus routes altogether. But to contrast with that, that would address it for some communities, not all. But I mean, that is one one place to start. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
Oh, please. I just had a one final question. I didn't know if anyone had put anything in for electric bikes on the bike path. I know a lot of residents have reached out to each one. All of us, actually, I'm just a little nervous about the high usage of electric bikes on the bike path, their speeds. Um, and I just didn't know if there was anything on your end that you guys are hearing.
Um, I can say that um it has came up when I was knocking doors over the summer and the fall. And I heard just as many people that were for it as were against it. But I don't, I'm not aware of any legislation, but I can ask.
Okay, thank you.
Microphone's not on there. You can hear me now, right? Um, one of the things I'd be interested in learning a little bit more about would be, um, I know that there's a ton of uh grant money and public financing available for like outdoor recreational facilities and things like that. One of the things that I'd be interested in learning a little bit more about, because I know Massachusetts has been doing a pretty good job with this. But um I'd like to learn a little bit more about whether there might be, um, what would it take for the state to make more money available for indoor recreational facilities? And of course, that's not a answer. I know that you have the top, uh off the top of your head, but I'd love to uh carry on that conversation at some point.
I do. Just to go back to Councilman Sweeney's question with um speed limits was the the caveat.
Exactly. The concern I'm hearing is just the high speeds um and children and accidents. Yep.
Um, yeah, I I just want to say thank you. I I looked at some of your prior to this meeting, I looked at some of the bills that you some of you have sponsored. Actually, I looked through all of them. Um, but I I know Sue was, uh Rep Donovan was one of them. Um, thank you for the Styrofoam bills and the plastics. Um, you know, reasonable uh reasonableness with that, I think will help. Um, I posted something recently on Facebook, the amount of plastic after that high tide we had that washed up was very sad. Uh, and it really sent sent, I think it sent a message to a lot of people. They don't realize how much plastic is out there. It's not the stuff we see. It's it's disintegrating in the water and I'm like, so thank you. I think we're on the, our general assembly's on the right path with that. You know, early on, I didn't, uh, to be honest with you, I was like Manny, um, but now I'm starting to realize how significant all this mainly Styrofoam, all breaks up. Anyway, thank you for that. See, it's not always bad, right?
O- one thing I would ask of, I know only two of you have served on councils, right? Am I correct? Uh, you didn't serve, you didn't, okay. Uh, I just ask that you be very considerate. I mean, I looked through the bills as, you know, as a administrator, you are constantly in trying to keep the council informed there, okay? And see informed here. But one thing I would ask is please be considerate. When you introduce a bill or you're uh supporting a bill that you think it's gonna have a major impact in municipalities. Especially when, you know, two of you have, in all due respect, I understand you, I'm sure you would appreciate that. Um, is that what we, what impact would it have if I was the one sitting in that seat there, in that town council? And uh, you know, serving that community, is that in the best interest? And I ask you to please be very considerate when that comes, because I'll tell you what. It's very frustrating sometimes when I see some of the bills that are being introduced and I'm going, really? Are you, excuse me, are you in the right mind, Billy? I mean, when you you're sponsoring a bill like that, we introduce a certain bill. You know, that if you were sitting in this seat here, or had you been sitting in here, you would understand that has a major rem impact and ramifications for the municipalities, you know. So please be considerate of that.
I know from my days in legislature and um there's definitely a clear difference, I think Wally might agree as well, between those of us who have served on councils and those of us who have not in terms of how you look at things and, you know, in 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 making determination. And I think that that is a a good point because some things can be really great, but some things just have to, like, it may be great that you think you're solving a big problem, but you're really not because it's creating a lot of work or a lot of issues uh at the local level or a lot of expenses as well.
So to that end, there was, um, and and I know that representative Speakman couldn't be here tonight because not feeling well. But there was a bill passed um that specifically deals with ADUs, additional dwelling units. The bill has lots of problems. It was passed. It's lots of problems. I'm gonna give you just a couple of examples of some issues here. Um, it says that communities are required, that there is no approval required for a resident in an R twenty zone if they want to um put in an ADU, an additional dwelling unit. They don't need an approval. Now, that in of itself, you can say, we have a half acre, isn't that enough space? That does, that's not what the bill says. The bill says in an R twenty zone, that assumes is is a twenty thousand square foot lot. The bill doesn't say that. And it is wrought and fraught with words like reasonable and excessive. But it does not get specific. That is a tremendous problem when zoning is about specific and setbacks and space and our local. We did not leave this to sit there, and this in particular, we have ordinance that deal specifically with ADUs. And ours says it cannot be bigger than approximately thirty three percent of the dwelling structure, the one that's there, right? The law allows the towns to affect some kind of control over it in regards to, for example, setbacks, but there is so much vagueness um that there are a lot of communities that are just saying, we're not gonna do this. Now, we're not taking that stance, obviously, but this law needs to be cleaned up. The goal was to, in my, at least the way I understand it, um, was to have more housing stock, more availability, right? But it doesn't take into it, this is to Mary's point, this is going to create, have this passed already and this havoc. Our planning board looked at it to give this council recommendation and couldn't even give us recommendation. That's how bad it was. So the goal, noble. The outcome, not so much. And I I want to stop there because Rep Speakman is not here and that's, I I I want to give her the opportunity to because I know that it was hers. So um not only hers, obviously. So things that were really important on this and also another one is effective on passage. So for example, if things are going to be done like this, you need to give the communities time to look at this law. Change our local ordinance to to be able to to deal with them. And more importantly, to Tony's point, is talk to us. Talk to us and say, what are you trying to accomplish? I mean, Bristol, this council in particular has done an outstanding job. Doing that right now with affordable housing in in Robin Rub was conversation in front of us recently. And it's not the only one with those, the the systems that we've had in place and the ordinances in place to make sure affordable housing works is outstanding. Could always be better. But this, I don't believe is the way to get there. And where I was going was, there is a a bill, I I I believe, and please correct me if I'm wrong, it's from the Speaker um for a draft new affordable housing law. Please give us an opportunity and not us as Bristol only, all communities to sit at the table and have discussion about this. Zoning is a local issue because it should be. There's no way the state can write a law and use this big broad brush. I mean, in just in in town, we have multiple zoning, right? And across the street changes, you all know this, I'm I'm boring you on this, you get it. But when the state passes this, it kills us. And our laws are there, ordinances are there to protect ourselves from our neighbors and our neighbors from us, right? If if you force these things, I think Bristol in particular has done a great job with this. And we review this all the time. In fact, we had zoning uh map in front of us recently, cleaned it up for usage. Um, so my takeaway is for you, please, on this one, we're gonna have more discuss discussion, this council will, moving forward. Um, about this law, I don't think it needs to be thrown away. The 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 goal is a good and noble one. The outcome of how it is, and we need to clean it up. Um, and then on affordable housing, this new, I, there's no bill number, but I understand that this is coming in front. Um, delayed implementation, have the towns and cities sit at the table with you and and talk to you about it, not just go forward with it. And again, to everybody's point here, talk to us. If there's something that like this that is going to tremendously affect us, bring our attention to it. Yes, it's our responsibility to look at it, but it's also, we need your help to know something's coming that we need to weigh in on.
No, definitely. And and I just wanna, I don't, June isn't here, but my understanding was that it was just an authorizing bill. It wasn't a bill that required you to do anything, meaning that you could decide at the local level what zoning you wanted to implement to have ADUs. Am I wrong?
Our solicitor uh had a long conversation with Andy Tights and then Amy Goines today. And it was quite the opposite. And the, again, I keep saying, it's not because the goal is wrong. This council clearly agrees on the goal. So we can have some more dialogue, but I wanted to throw that out there to consider it. Um, and also, this is, it was an opportunity, because we've had a few things that we've gone through, to follow up on this.
So I I want to say again, I had a conversation with the town administrator in Barrington last week. Um, some of these things, like this particular municipal laws can can be filed when they need to be. But things like that, like there's a timeframe for that. And those kind of changes of if you were asking for a bill to be drafted to amend that bill, then that's by mid February.
So this council has not had discussion on this. This is fresh and new. We were hoping for the planning board to come to us with recommendation, but they stopped. It was, I don't want to repeat everything. So so I, but I appreciate that.
And I think this in the future too, like these kind of meetings, like this is kind of, this is new and this is great. And I'm so glad that we're having this conversation.
Yes, and thank you.
This is a little late in the process too. Like, I would do this earlier in January so that if there were priorities that you were hoping to get into a session. Right, yeah, while we could have new legislations, right? Next year, November, we'll be fine, because we would all be on the table.
Allow you to put in legislation after that.
You can for municipal.
For municipal.
Yeah.
But that like, a change like that's not a municipal law.
It is.
Well, not just, because it wouldn't just be for Bristol, though, it would be.
Well, yeah, that's right. Um, I I'm wondering if other towns, but they, other towns must have the same problems that we're having. So I'm sure they're aware of it.
I have not had direct conversations with other communities, but I've had conversations with people who have. And yes, these, what I just expressed, I'm, we're not alone with those concerns. So, um, go ahead.
No, I I didn't have an opportunity to say thank you for being here this evening and certainly we appreciate it. I know I do, and so do my colleagues. We all do.
Yes, guys.
You know, your time is very valuable, understood.
It's not, not an easy time of the year either. Everybody's sick, right? Everybody's family's sick, so. Yeah, new baby and and a whole house that's sick.
Mr. Minister?
Yeah, this uh, I think this is a good open time to bring this up. Five thirty today, I got a email from five thirty PM, an email from the Executive Director, League of Cities and Towns. Uh, there is a draft resolution uh with a blank name for the municipalities relating to housing. Um, and how the League of Cities and Towns um is objecting to the bill you just spoke of and and others. Um, and you see, it's very early in on the process at the General Assembly. So um I will introduce that to the council formally um for consideration.
Outstanding.
Alright.
So to leave on a positive, this, we we all very much appreciate your time and your efforts. Um, thank you. Um, I'm gonna, as I said in the beginning, work with the clerk and find a a follow up that we can talk about how we progressed in all of this. Um, is there anything that you wanted to share with us before we part ways?
But when we do come back, remember that the later we get in the session, we're not available in the evenings. You know, it would have to be.
We want to work with your schedule, so we understand.
It would have to be like a month, like a Monday evening, if that's possible. I don't know. Um.
Do you think that, it seems to me like early to mid May would be the latest you'd want to do that meeting, just because you know, the session might be a month away from ending to six weeks. And if you really want to make a difference, like you have a pretty good sense of what's gonna happen to some legislation, don't you think? I mean, I don't, I don't really see us meeting like in June at the last minute.
No.
When you guys are.
Thank you.
I would think like, like late April to mid May.
Correct.
Does that seem reasonable to all of you?
Basically, what happens is all the bills are submitted between now and mid February. By the end of February, the uh, the committees have all the bills and they can have likeness in terms of subject matter. So for instance, they'll do all the uh uh for my committee, for instance, with the all the veterans bills, one day we'll do all the liquor bills, another day. We'll do all the plate bills another day. So you have commonality so that you have an open discussion on all the bills of a certain subject. And then uh, once that takes place, usually all of March into April. And then by the April vacation, the House and the Senate start establishing what their priorities are. So then the end of April, early May, you start seeing bills coming out from the Senate and the House that their priorities. And then from there, the discussion takes place in terms of, you know, in June as to what bills are gonna move forward and which ones aren't.
So we will work with you. And I like that, that timeline that we've just spoken about. So we'll come up with something to to meet back for updates. Excellent. Anything else before we part ways? Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you, everyone.